Good evening, everybody. It is 6:30 PM on September 26th. It is the regular meeting of the Olentangie School Board of Education. I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Jenkins, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Dr. Dabricko?
Here.
Dr. Wallach?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Schreiber?
Here.
All right, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda. Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Jenkins.
Give me a moment. This wasn't marked as an action item.
Mind your way. No, you're fine. What's your... Parlor.
So was that Dabricko, Schreiber, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, so first of all, I've been told that we have some visitors from Delaware City Schools, which we're so excited to have you all here to learn about government and sort of the operations of this. We'll try to put on a reasonably good presentation for you, but we always welcome students to come and learn about government. And if you have any questions about these things, we are going to go to an executive session here after a little while. You may not want to stay for the whole executive session, but we'd be happy to answer questions afterwards, so you could feel free to email any of us, or certainly, you know, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Jenkins, anybody associated with it, but we very much welcome you here and glad to see you. I will note, we've got some really good things on the agenda to discuss tonight, including the State Report Card, which Ms. Kenny will present, and we had some great results and love to take those as an opportunity to both learn about what we're doing and ways to improve, so we'll hear a little bit about that. We are also going to have a policy update that's on the agenda. As I said, we're going to be taking an executive session to discuss in the middle of the session. We will be voting or having an action come up for vote after that, so there will be some action, which is not, you know, not always how it is. I do just want to flag that for those in the audience, sometimes that can take a little while, but we will be coming back to have some of that. I also want to note that, as we said, really since the spring when we had the levy that failed, one of our big goals moving forward was to think about ways to engage the community and learn a little bit more about the community's perspectives on, you know, the types of issues that are important relative to what a future levy will be and some of the actions that we can be taking. We have a lot of things that we're discussing. We've had a lot of sessions where we've done that, including the work session a while back. One aspect of that that we're going to talk about tonight is that we plan to do a survey for everyone, so I want to talk a little bit about that so that people understand what's going to be happening there. When we think about the community, it's really the cornerstone of everything that we do here, and, you know, we try to reach out to the community in a lot of ways, both being very intentional about hearing what the community has to say about these things so that we can really understand what is important to our families, to our staff, to our district residents, and our other community members, so that we can always address those needs, right? That is the fundamental aspect of what we do as a board and as a school district. With that in mind, we've partnered with Fallon Research, which we've used in other types of surveys with the district in the past, and we plan to send out a digital SMS text survey. I don't even know what SMS stands for, but I know that it relates to text messaging.
Short messaging service, something like that.
Yeah, I don't know, it's one of those things. But basically, a text message survey that we're going to be using to get a deeper understanding of some of these issues that are affecting our schools, affecting our district residents, and how that might impact what we're trying to do. It's going to be a confidential survey. We're going to send it out on October 1st. Responses will be collected from adults, residents 18 years of age or older who represent the various demographics in the Olentangie community, and it's not just, you know, parents who have kids in schools. It's, you know, really a very broad swath because the full community is part of our community. We're looking forward to hearing that. We, you know, we're going to have questions like, how do you feel about life in Delaware County? You know, how do you, you know, what do you think about the various options that are available? And these are just going to be some of these initial steps that we're taking here to get some of that feedback and then build it into what we're doing. There will be more that we'll announce further on, but I just want to flag that for the community, and I would encourage everyone who gets it to please respond to us, right? We do look at these things. When we did the superintendent survey, I know we got a spreadsheet that was about this thick of all the responses, and we walked through those. I mean, that was really important to us, so please, please do participate. With that, I don't know that we've had, we had, do we have facilities since we met last?
We talked already about it.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
It was the day before the last?
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay, any other things? Oh, and we...
Did you, was there a mental health committee? Because I couldn't make...
Oh, there was a mental health committee, yeah, I'm sorry, this is...
I know.
We did have our district mental health committee. We had a really good discussion as part of the follow-up to the safety issue. We talked about it in our last board meeting with Liberty, and we talked about, you know, some of the mental health aspects that go along with safety, right? The feeling of security and how that impacts students' ability to learn. So we're having some continued discussions about ways that we may want to think about what that means on a day-to-day basis. We've also been having some discussions about a competition that students can have on how to break the stigma, and we're hoping to roll that out a little bit as we go along. Yeah, thanks for reminding me. Okay, I think that's what we've got. So if anything else, then we'll jump right into our agenda, which is, Ms. Kenny, the Director of Data and Continuous Improvement, to talk about the State Report Card.
Good evening. Thank you for having me today. I'm honored that I am the one that gets to share some really great news about our 2024 Ohio State, our school report card. And there is a lot of great news to share, but we do want to acknowledge that this is just one way that we are really measuring our success and how our students are flourishing because there's a lot of other great things and opportunities that aren't measured on the State Report Card, but today we're going to talk about the great news that is. So this is the overall kind of big picture of what our State Report Card is. This is the second year in a row that districts have received and schools have received an overall rating. So over the next few minutes, we're going to talk a little bit about what goes into the different components, how they're measured, what they measure, and then how our district and our schools actually performed on them. So the overall rating is comprised of many different components, so as a district, all of these components do count, and those are achievement, progress, gap closing, early literacy, and graduation. So the achievement and progress rate or components are weighted a little bit more heavily than the gap closing, early literacy, and graduation when we look overall. The ratings are between one to five stars, and this is the only one that you can get a half star in. So our district, for the second year in a row, and the only times that we've ever had the overall rating, we are a five-star district. We are one of 68 in the state who received that five-star rating, so only, you know, the top 11.2% of districts were able to achieve that, which means we are significantly exceeding the state standards. And then here's the data for our schools. So you can see all 26 of our schools, and just to note, we do have 27 schools now, but Peachbowl is not included in this data set because we don't have any data for them yet. That will be included in the future. So all 26 of our schools are exceeding state standards, and 18 of those received that five-star overall rating, meaning that they are significantly exceeding state standards. We also had four schools who not only earned the five-star overall rating, but earned five stars on all of their components as well, and those are Oak Creek Elementary, Tyler Run Elementary, Berkshire Middle School, and Olentangie High School. So now the things that actually go into each of these components. So the achievement rating is one that has been, or component is one that's been around probably for the longest, and this is going to be measuring the academic achievement of our students on the state assessments, including the Ohio State Test, the alternate assessments, as well as some AP tests are included as well. So our district achievement rating is a five-star. Our performance index was a 103.1, and so that was 94.3% of the MAC score available, and that MAC score is calculated by the top, the average of the top 2% of districts across the state. This is the measure component that we can also kind of look at how we rank across the state pretty easily. So our performance index was 39th in the state, or kind of the, or the top 6.4%, fourth in Central Ohio, and fifth in our similar district group. When we're looking at kind of comparison as well, we also like to look at other large districts, and so when we compared ourselves to any district that had over 10,000 students, which there are 14 of them, we had the highest performance index by over five points. So not only are we outachieving large districts by, but by a large magnitude as well. And then here's our schools. So state rankings for our buildings, all of our elementaries were in the top 23.8, and 10 of our schools were in the top 10%. So majority of our schools earning that five-star rating with a few with that four-star. So all of them are exceeding state standards or significantly exceeding state standards. Middle schools, all of our middle schools, when we compare to other buildings that have grade six through eight, were all in the top 10.5%, three of them in the top 5% of the state. And then high schools, all were within the top 9%, and two of our high schools were in the top 5%. So again, achieving very highly as a district, and we can see that, that's because of the great work by our schools. Progress is the next component, and again, this is one that is weighted heavily with achievement, and this is probably the one that is the most challenging to understand. What progress is doing is it's measuring the growth on Ohio State Test, and it's a comparative measure. So they're looking at, how did our students do historically, and then how did they perform last spring compared to other students who were similar to them? So it's not anything that we can calculate on our own because we're not, we don't have data from all of the students across the state. So what we like to do is kind of take a step back and try to think about it conceptually. Did our students, when we look at the distribution of students in the state, did we increase, did we maintain, or did we decrease their place in the full distribution of students? If they increased their place in the distribution, then we would consider that exceeding the growth expectation. If they maintained it, they met that growth expectation, they essentially performed just like other students like them, and then if they decreased the place in the distribution, that would be when we fell short of, of that growth. Three stars in this measure would be meeting that expected growth. Our students performed exactly how we would expect them to. Four or five stars are when we're going to have significant evidence that students have exceeded the growth, and then anything in that one or two would be significant evidence that the students did not meet the expected growth. So when we look at our district progress rating, this is the one component that we did receive four stars, but again, that four-star rating still means that we have significant evidence that our students exceeded the expected growth on the Ohio State Tests. And then in that graph there, you can see how our schools performed. So we had majority of our schools that were significant evidence of exceeding growth. We had a few schools who met expected growth, and then we have one building at that two stars. To get from that four to five-star rating, it's not only the amount of statistical evidence that growth happened or exceeded growth, but it's also at the, a magnitude. And in order to get to that, you have to have what they call an effect size of .1, and again, this year, just like last year, we were at an effect size of 0.9, zero, or .09. So we're 1/100 away from that five-star rating, but it's pretty negligible because again, when we're looking at just the evidence that our students exceeded growth, that is there. This is also a measure that we have very limited data on right now. In a few weeks, probably two to three weeks, the state's going to open a system called EVOs, and at that point, we'll be actually able to kind of dig into the data to look at which students we were most successful growing, which students we might have an opportunity to do something a little different to grow them more, and that's where we'll be able to work as a district and then with our buildings as well to kind of create those actionable steps to make sure that we're continuing in this.
One quick question on this. I could probably go back to last year's presentation and check, but do you happen to know offhand how this, this particular graph marks to our performance last year, where we were versus five, four, three?
I believe it's pretty similar, but I would have to go back and look specifically. We typically have most of our schools at that four and five-star. I think we had one building at the two-star again, or at two-stars last year, it was a different building than this year, but I think it's pretty similar.
Mr. Lester, do you want questions all at the end or as we go through each slide?
I mean, I think it's, it's relevant, it's, either way, it's...
I'll let you judge.
I have the gavel, so...
Yeah. No, I'll wait till you're done with the gap closing because those are the ones I wanted to talk about.
Okay. So gap closing is the next component, and this is measuring the academic achievement and growth of specific subgroups of students. So there are up to 10 different subgroups that this measure is looking at. As a district, we did achieve a five-star rating here, and there's a lot of data that goes into gap closing, so we're going to kind of spread it over a couple of slides so you can actually, we could make the graphs large enough for you to see. On this first slide, we're looking at the English Language Arts, both achievement and growth for the different subgroups. So when we're looking at that chart or graph on the left-hand side, that's creating, they created a performance index for each of those subgroups, and that red dot is what that state goal or expectation is. So we can see that all of the, all of our bars or all of our performance indexes for all of those different subgroups has far exceeded what that state goal is. On the right-hand side is looking at growth, so similar to that progress rating that we were just talking about. The red line is what they call a growth index of two, which means that anything surpassing that is significant evidence that students are exceeding expected growth. So we can see that we had five of those subgroups that exceeded expected growth in English Language Arts, and we have four subgroups that are not quite to that exceeding yet. What I think can be somewhat misleading is it looks like those, those subgroups that haven't surpassed that red line maybe aren't growing, but all of those subgroups are still within what we would consider meeting expected growth. So definitely an area that we can continue to look at and improve, but those subgroups are still performing very well in both achievement and in growth. And we also had two additional subgroups compared to last year who kind of crossed that red line to exceeding. So I think some of those subgroups, we are making progress in those areas. This slide's going to show you that same data but for math. So again, on the left-hand side, we can see where all of those red dots are the state expectation or goal is, and all of our bars far exceeding for all of our subgroups. And then on the right-hand side, question?
How does the state determine the red dot?
So it's, it's a goal that's increasing, increases each year, and what they did a few years ago is they looked at historical data and looked at kind of how those subgroups were performing on average and set those goals.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, that isn't something that we control as far as that goal being different for the different subgroups of students.
So is the red dot EVOs?
No, so the red dot is the performance index, so that would be just achievement.
I, I mean, the red line, so that, that, the red line you've got in ELA and math, is that EVOs? That's, is that, are you calculating, that's not based on EVOs, is it?
It is.
Okay. So we already have, this isn't this year though, because you said EVOs is coming out...
They have this kind of just big-picture data for us, but they don't have EVOs open for us to dig into all of these numbers yet. It's the frustrating kind of timing of the way that they release data.
And just a reminder, we can't check their numbers.
No.
Because the formula's proprietary, so we're evaluating people on a formula that we don't really know what it is.
We don't, and it is that comparative measure, so we don't have all of that data from the rest of the state to even try to calculate it on our own. So it, it's one of those that, you know, we, we take a look at, we try to think about it conceptually and use it in the way that we can to continue to improve.
So it might be the only number in education where we say, you can't check your work?
True.
Okay.
We're still doing pretty good.
We are still doing very well, and you can see that in the math data, all of our subgroups have surpassed that red line, meaning that all of our subgroups are exceeding expected growth.
The reason, the reason I bring that up is because obviously you want to, you want to see where you're doing good and doing bad, but if you can't see their formula, you can't see their numbers, yeah, have at it, if it's on track or not.
A couple other pieces that are included here, graduation. So they have a graduation rate goal for all of those subgroups. You can see that all of our subgroups have exceeded what that graduation rate goal would be. On the right-hand side is a measure for our English learners, and this is using an annual test that they are required by the state to take called the OWLPA. And so this measure is looking at how well are those students acquiring the English language. So either becoming proficient on that OWLPA test or meeting kind of a growth goal by increasing their score by one or two points depending on where they, where they started. This is a population that is increasing very rapidly here in our district, and you can see that our students are, again, far exceeding that state goal of how they're acquiring the English language. And I think what's really important to note as well is that English learner subgroup is included in both, in the math achievement and growth and the ELA achievement and growth, and they are far exceeding not only how they're acquiring the English language, but also how they are performing on the actual content standards for the state of Ohio. And then one of the final pieces that's included in gap closing is a gifted measure, and so they look at our students who have a gifted identification, and they look at their growth, they calculate a performance index, so they're looking at their achievement, and then they're looking also at how we are providing services for our gifted population. Our, there sometimes is a misconception that it is hard to grow gifted students. You can see that we do have a far, five-star rating for our gifted growth, so that means that our gifted students are significantly exceeding that expected growth at a high magnitude. So I think that says a lot about our gifted specialists in the buildings, our gifted program, and our classroom teachers who are truly meeting the needs of our high-achieving and gifted students. We did have a performance index for our gifted students of a 117.6. Unfortunately, we did not quite get the points for this one, or the performance index is a not met because the state had set the kind of threshold that we had to have 97.5% of the max gifted performance index in order to meet that. While our gifted performance index did increase by .6 compared to last year, we were only at 97.1% of that overall. But our gifted students still are performing at a very high level of achievement. About 80% of tests taken by gifted students, they were scoring either at advanced or advanced plus, and 94, a little over 94%, were at least at accomplished, advanced or advanced plus. So very high achievement, again, an area that we can continue to reach for, but there's still high achievement for them.
Is the gifted performance evaluated only in the subjects in which they've been identified as gifted? So in other words, if you've tested in English, do you get English and math, or is it just English?
So it's the, the area that they're identified gifted, however, if they have a superior cognitive identification, then they're included in all of the areas.
Janice, is the MTSS data, when you look essentially at lots of information that's, let's say roughly normally distributed, is growth keeping your relative position in that normal distribution? As opposed to exceeding growth, does that mean that maybe one year you're in the 85th percentile, but the next year you're in the 92nd? What, is that roughly what is meant with all that MTSS data? Is if you're doing as expected, you're staying roughly where you were in previous years when looking at a normal distribution?
Yep, and so that's what we like to think conceptually. Are they kind of holding their place in line in the distribution? Are they moving up, or are they falling a little bit back?
Do you, do we do things, so nobody likes surprises, so do we do things so we know these numbers are coming? So let's say we start in the fall and kids are back, and we're working through the summer setback, and, you know, my son didn't pick up a book, I think, the whole summer, so they come back, and then we're, what are we doing to see where they're at now, looking forward to the end of the year?
Yeah, I mean, teachers are gathering data all the time. We're, we do in K8, and then there's some different mechanisms in high school, we're giving AmesWeb as a universal screener, so we're not only measuring kind of where they are in the achievement world, but we're also looking at some of the growth calculations that are there. But teachers are constantly giving, you know, formative and somewhat of assessments that are based on the state standards, so they're continually monitoring that growth throughout the year.
Do we do anything at the district level, like, so we know we've got a big problem here, we, you know, everything's on track? And I'm thinking about, you know, you said AmesWeb, like, how good of a job does that do predicting the end?
It's not a perfect, because it's not standards-based, it's not like an Ohio assessment, but there is, we have found a strong correlation that if students are achieving at the 40th percentile in AmesWeb, there's a high likelihood statistically that they will be proficient on that assessment. But then we're also looking at those student growth percentiles to say, depending on where the students are, you know, are they, are we seeing growth or, you know, that we would expect them to be exceeding growth because it is a nationally-normed assessment, and we can intervene quickly if we start to see that to dip.
You answered my question if that triggers intervention, so it sounds like it does.
It does, definitely. The only other part of the gifted part of the gap closing measure is the gifted identification and services. This is a measure that, because we have such a high percentage of our students who have a gifted identification, the model that we have to consider direct service probably will never kind of reach that threshold. We've done a study a couple years ago, but I think we would need probably between 25 and 30 staff members in order to directly serve all of our students who have a gifted identification. And what we've always kind of looked at then is, are gifted students growing, and are they still high-achieving? So if their needs are being met in the classroom, just because we might not be able to report to the state that they're being directly served, they're receiving the services that they need. And here you can see the distribution for our schools. Our schools also had very strong performance on the gap closing measure. All were either exceeding or significantly exceeding the state expectations, and I've already sat down with many buildings, and they really are digging into some of that subgroup data to make sure that they're meeting the needs of all of their students. The early literacy measure, this is a measure that's included for our elementary schools, and it's looking at reading improvement and proficiency from kindergarten through third grade. We did receive a five-star rating as a district, and we were the only district with over 10,000 students to earn five stars on this measure throughout the state.
So no pre-K that is included in that? But pre-K's still required by law, right?
For students who are identified with a disability, yes.
But then they also have the peer support, too?
Correct.
Okay.
There are a couple different pieces to this measure. One is looking at kind of that end game, what percent of our students are proficient on the reading portion of the Ohio State Test, what percentage of our students are being promoted to the fourth grade due to the third-grade reading guarantee, and then there's an improving K3 literacy measure that can be factored in, however, it's only factored in if you have more than 10% of your kindergarteners identified as not on track. So as a district, the only two pieces that went in to this measure for us were proficient on third-grade reading as well as promotion to the fourth grade.
Just, I'm curious, when you say we're the only district with over 10,000 earned five stars, we were talking about the performance index earlier, you mentioned we were fifth among comparable districts. Who are the four comparable districts above us?
They were. Let me go back to the achievement paper.
Should've asked your question in this slide.
It's okay.
I know. I was holding, and then, yeah.
The Central Ohio or similar districts?
The similar districts, yeah.
Similar districts was Hudson, Sycamore, New Albany, and Mason. And I would say Mason, we, we were both a 103.1, but their hundreds and thousands place were a little bit higher than us, so their percentage was a little bit higher.
But size-wise?
Size-wise.
Size-wise, yeah.
Right, right. So, I mean, I think that that's an important thing to note with this, and I'm glad you included this designation because the challenge of replicating at scale is a, is a real one, right? I mean, that, that's very real, and so while we certainly compare ourselves to these, you know, other districts, New Albany and Olentangie look very different.
Well, and even us at Mason, that's a different experience at Mason than it is Olentangie.
Yeah.
Here is the distribution for our schools. We had 10 schools significantly exceeding state standards, and then six of our schools We had 10 schools significantly exceeding state standards, and then six of our schools either met or exceeded. We did have a few of our schools who had kind of crossed that threshold of more than 10% of their kindergarteners as not on track, and so they had kind of that additional piece included in the calculation. Graduation is another component. Again, this would be just for our high schools. Thanks, John. And this is looking at both our four-year and our five-year graduation rate. So again, we're rated as five stars, and all of our schools were also at that overall five-star rating. Just for information, our four-year graduation rate was a 98.1%, and that's for the class of 2023. And then it would have been the class of 2022, but our five-year graduation rate was 99%. So that is incredibly high. And then again, if we're comparing ourselves to those larger districts, we had the highest percentage, and we were the only district with districts who had at least 1,200 graduates or more to earn that five-star rating. So that is all of the rated components. But another component that currently is report-only and will likely become a rated component in the future is the college career workforce and military readiness. And so this measure is intended to look at how well-prepared are our students for whatever their future opportunities are. The earliest that this will receive a star rating is in the 24, 25 school year, but it's out for public comment right now, and they're still kind of defining what this might look like, so more to come. But the information that we have now really is intended to be used for informational purposes. So how can we take what it's telling us now and continue to work towards making sure that all of our students are receiving one of these opportunities?
Just like a beta metric, it sounds like it's not even fully developed, or is that too overstating it?
So they've finally finalized the rules of what is going to be included and how that information's going to be gathered. However, because this is for our graduates, the data is lagged, and so the data that we're looking at on the screen right now is for the class of 2023. So when we think that they've just finalized how they're going to collect some of this information, back when the class of 2023 graduated, we may not have been reporting all of these things to the state. So of what was reported to the state, this is what we know, but we know that some of the data is missing because it just wasn't a piece of it back then. So it's still, I think, is a good thing to take a look at and create some future opportunities. Again, we kind of compared ourselves to the larger districts that have at least 1,200 in their graduation cohort, and we did have the second highest percentage there.
But it wouldn't, like, Blended, for example, it wouldn't, couldn't include data like that, which would positively impact it, I'm guessing?
Yeah, and for example, if we look at our chart on the right-hand side, it doesn't show anything for military enlistment. Well, that was something that just wasn't gathered and reported to the state, though we know we had students in the class of 2023 who went into the military. So we are continuing to work on making sure that we have systems in place to collect all of this information so that it is accurate. And then we're also looking at some different opportunities for, through the audit that we're doing with the ESC, looking at industry credentials, are there things that we can embed in some of our curriculum opportunities now to make sure that students are kind of receiving the training, the support, and the planning that they need to be successful in their future? A lot of this might come through some of the opportunities through Bridge Ed, which has an event coming up soon.
I said blended, sorry.
I knew what you meant. With like the Ohio Means Jobs Readiness Seal and the 250 Hours of Work-Based Learning, I think that we definitely are identifying some opportunities and figuring out how we can ensure that our students are going to be college, career, workforce, military, whatever their next step in the future is, and that they're successful.
You may have said this, I didn't hear, but do you have to have like a set number of these to get this, or what does that mean?
So in order to make it into the numerator of this, you have to fit into one of the bucket.
Just one?
Yep. So we might have students who fit into five of them, and that's great for that student, but really they can only count once in the numerator. So what we're trying to identify and even looking at, who isn't included in the numerator now, what types of opportunities do we need to provide for students to make sure that they all have an opportunity to fit into one of those buckets that they want?
It's interesting that all this data is collected differently than the OST, which is collected, if you mess that up as a teacher, you're not teaching anymore, if you screw up an OST. But this is, just seems like it's not there yet.
It's not. They're getting there, and again, I think that's why they're getting feedback from the public on what is the best way to, you know, what would the expectation be as far as a percentage, and how are we making sure that we have all of those pieces in place to have accurate reporting as well?
Because is some of the data self-reported? So I see one of the things is like an apprenticeship, right? So graduate from school, I decide I want to be an electrician, I go the apprenticeship route, but I wait a year until I do it. So that wouldn't be captured unless that student self-reported back to us what they're doing?
And even then, it wouldn't. So for the, like, if we offer pre-apprenticeships, then we have to code it a certain way for the apprenticeship. We essentially, the student would need to provide us with kind of like an intent that they were entering an apprenticeship program. So some of it in military enlistment, students need to provide us with their forms so that we can then code them the correct way. So that's where, as a district, we're trying to work through, where, you know, how can we make sure that we are capturing all of these things that our students are doing so that we don't miss out or have inaccurate reporting for our students?
Yeah, okay.
Are there any other questions?
That's very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just get to be the one to share the good news, so.
Very much appreciate it. Thank you. And really appreciate the thoughtfulness in putting it all together.
Absolutely.
All right. All right, Mr. Meyer.
Yeah, Ms. Kenny, great job. Today, we had the Delaware County State of the Schools, all the Delaware County superintendents sat on a panel, and we were asked questions. But one of the questions was, what makes you proud as superintendent of your respective school district? So obviously, these results just came out, and when you reflect and you put things into context, so in the early 90s, remember, we were 2,000 students. When I came in the district, 2007, '08, 13,000, over 24,000 students today. And the results that we continue to get don't happen by accident. And as superintendent, extremely proud of the over 3,000 employees that we have in this district who show up each and every day to do what's in the best interest of our kids. And when you walk in our buildings and you see the work of the district, the aligned laser focus of the district from our strategic plan to our continuous improvement plans to the building grade-level teams, and the work that they do to continually analyze how they can provide the best educational experience for every student that walks through our doors is simply unmatched. It's unbelievable. And I really want to highlight the gap closing because Ms. Kenny mentioned our EL population increase. So just this year, since school started, it's already increased over 2,000 or 200 EL students. So we're 1,600 EL students in our district. And, you know, we're blessed, and I'm extremely grateful of the support that we provide for our subgroup students. So whether you're a student with disabilities, disability, whether you're an EL student, again, the resources and the support that we provide for our student population is unbelievable, and our staff really deserves all the credit because they, along with our administrators, really are focused on providing the best student experience for our kids. So I just wanted to say that. So with that, want to highlight, I mentioned this at the last board meeting, so we hosted, again, Owletangie Schools English Learner Program hosted their annual multilingual family night last night. So it was at Clinoke Elementary, so around 50 families attended. So again, it's a great service that we provide out of that department to engage and partner with our multilingual families. September 16th through 20th, I mentioned this last board meeting, too, was start, the start of Hello Week in our schools. So this is just a great program, but really, I think the pictures say it all. You just look at the smiles of the kiddos up there from the different pictures. So again, we want inclusive environments, and we work with our kids to make sure that all kids are included in our, in the educational experience. Want to highlight this, too, because I know this has been a goal of the Board of Education. So we have recently launched the ability to engage with non-parent residents. So we had sent out just last week, I believe we started this through our website, where non-parent residents can sign up for information from the schools. And this will be a good vehicle for us to inform non-parent residents of things that are going on within the schools. So we've launched that on all of our social media platforms, but we've also shared with the local townships, the county, the library system. So we're trying to make sure that we get the message out, and we will continue to get the message out, so then we can continue to connect with, again, non-parent residents because, like Mr. Lester said at the beginning, very important in our school community. So as of today, and this number probably continues to change, but we've had 75 residents, non-parent residents sign up. So we'll continue to promote that.
When we say periodic updates, how periodic, roughly speaking?
Yeah, so we want to make sure that we're intentional with the information that we send. So when we send out our district newsletter, that will be an example of things, an item that will go out. And then information that we feel non-residents, we have now, we have a mechanism where we can communicate that out. Also, just want to highlight Lori Carter Evans. She received the Exemplary School Employee Award at the OSBA regional meeting. It was last week, I think, last week. And then also Mark Latham, who is a community member, who received the Friend of Public Education Award, and probably, and again, many don't know, but Mark has served the school district for about 20 years now, when he implemented the club tennis program at the middle school, and he's been doing it as a volunteer for now 20 years. So he was recognized last week. And Dr. Wallach was selected as the 2025 president-elect for the Ohio School Board Association's Central Region. As I said in my board update over the weekend, you know, Dr. Wallach is a huge advocate, not only for Owletangie Schools, but for public education across the state. So thank you for your wonderful service to public education. Also want to highlight, because we just completed our first professional development day, and again, when, for me as superintendent, and when you think about so many good things that we do in the district, the professional development opportunities that we provide for staff are amazing, too. So from our first professional development day around developing a sense of purpose to support teachers work towards specific building CIP goals. So these are the responses. So 1,085 staff responses, 96% agreed that they walked away with practical routines or strategies that they can apply in their classrooms. So it does make an impact. 99% felt that collaboration was encouraged and supportive, supported, and 98% reported that the learning was relevant to their current teaching position. So again, very intentional and purposeful in putting this together, so kudos to our curriculum team and our building administrators for putting this on. I wanted to, mass communication test call, so we do this once a year, so this is just a graph. Last week was our test. So again, this is a way for us to communicate to parents, to students around school closures and emergencies. So we want to make sure that we test this system every year to make sure that we have captured as many as we can to get notifications when we send those notifications out. So you can see 36,880 phone numbers called, over 15,000 calls were answered, almost 21,000 went to voicemail, 639 rang with no answer or answering system, and then 436 unreachable. And then also, we text, so you can see the text data there as well. So the reason this is a test is because we want to make sure that we're making contact with our parents, and if we're not, then they have an opportunity to, if they choose to go into Power School, to make sure that they have the correct information in there in order to be notified. So I know that's always a big hit on the first delay or snow day, that's called during the year, but we do that well in advance, so that's out there. And I'm sure, knocking wood, Mr. Gordon, we're going to have a fall day any day, right? Coming up? We're up every morning at 4:00 checking, so. Superintendent action items, pretty standard action items for me tonight, but I do want to highlight two retirements. Jennifer Crupp, who is retiring from Shanahan Middle School, 25 years of service at the end of this year. And then Pam Otten, who will be retiring from Orange High School, 28 years of service at the end of this year. And me personally, I worked alongside Pam Otten at Orange High School, so well-deserved retirement, and she's done a great job in servicing our students and families in Owletangie, and then also got to know Jen Crupp very well with our partnership with OTA. So wish them both well in retirement, and they will be missed. Some important dates coming up. We have Orange High School and Liberty High School alumni gatherings this Friday, so I think this is our last two. End of the first quarter already, Wednesday, October 16th. Owletangie Bridge Ed, Bridging the Future, that'll be, that event will be held at Owletangie High School on October 16th, so looking forward to that. Teacher Work Day, no school on October 17th. Code Day, no school on October 18th, so kind of a long weekend there. And then our next Board of Education meeting right here, October 10th at 6:30.
Any questions?
No?
It's good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Jenkins.
Good evening, board members. Wanted to bring something to the board's attention that we're working on currently with bond counsel, also our municipal advisor, Baker Tilly. Exciting times for people like me when the Fed drops the interest rate. I don't have much to do most evenings, and so I thumb my way through Federal Open Market Committee minutes. But most people probably are realizing this because for the first time in a long time, interest rates are starting to go down. The Fed cut the target federal funds rate by 50 basis points, which is just a fancy way of saying half percentage point. But just like homeowners, who may be right now, for the first time in a long time, getting a chance to think about getting into a different mortgage, we have the same opportunity as a district through what is called a refunding. So remember, when we need money to be able to build facilities, we issue debt. We sell that debt that would have a stated interest rate that's paid semi-annually in the form of a coupon. Think of a mortgage, you know, our debt is usually 25, 30 years. But when interest rates drop, you can essentially sell new debt at a lower interest rate and pay off old debt. Although that sounds highfalutin and fancy, that is just literally refinancing a mortgage, school-style or municipal entity-style. So a few things for you to be aware of, the source for all this is just GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. Bond refundings are often what state and local governments do to be able to reduce interest rates and reduce costs. Municipal bonds are typically issued with a, what's called a call date. And quite literally, when we issue the debt, the certificate or the piece of paper that the bondholder buys, they realize that we have the right to completely redeem it in X number of years, pay them what they originally borrowed, and pull it back even though it may not be mature. So we have a group of bonds that are approaching call dates, and the call dates would be in June of 2025 and December of 2025. We've analyzed what those are, and if you try to do a refunding and call something more than 90 days in advance, that's called an advanced refunding, and you really can't do those anymore. The IRS, well, I should qualify. You can do them, but you then have to issue the debt as taxable debt, not tax-exempt debt. So we really want to try to wait until it can be what's called a current refunding. So the two issues that you see here, and this is not a mistake, we are refunding a previous refunding. So we would have in 2015, we So we would have in 2015, we would have issued refunding bonds then that would have refunded bonds that were issued before that. And then we did the same thing in 2016. But both of those were issued, as you can see, with call dates. The Series 2015B, there's about $41 million in par value bonds that would be callable. And the Series 2016 has about 17.7 million that would be callable. So the proposed closing for the whole deal in one iteration would be March. And the way we would accomplish that is we would current refund the 2015 bonds, and we would do what's called a forward settlement on the Series 2016. So what is a forward settlement? The underwriter agrees in March for an agreed-upon price that when we settle in September, when it is current, they've agreed to that price back in March. But there is a premium associated with that because the underwriter doesn't want to lose their shirt in case the bond market goes haywire. So I will be asking the Board of Education to consider, at its October 10th meeting, the legislation that will essentially allow us to, as you can see, do an advanced refunding of the 2016 refunding bonds and a forward delivery for those same 2016 bonds. Or the resolution will also allow us to simply wait and issue the 2016 refunding bonds later and settle in September. So this slide kind of puts it all in perspective. So what you kind of have at the top are the two possible options. If we refund the 2015 refunding bonds, and those have a June 1 call date, so when we get to March, it's a current refunding, and we have no problems there, that could have gross savings of about 3.7 million. When I say gross savings, that's just if you take a look at the outstanding debt and what we would pay in interest and principal over the life of the remaining debt. And then if you issue the refunding bonds and you compare the two amortization schedules, we'll be saving 3.7 million dollars for our taxpayers. That's about a 7.6, sorry, 7.66% if you turn that into a present value, if you take those future streams of payments and bring them back to a present value discount. The other thing we will do is with the 2016 refunding bonds, which have a December call date, we will basically, in that same resolution, do two things. We'll allow ourselves to do option one, which would be a forward settlement. Now notice, option one and option two are slightly different because, under option one, you are settling in March, well, you're establishing a price and closing the deal, so to speak, in March, even though you won't sell it and completely settle until September. So there's a premium that the underwriter will want to charge us because they're agreeing six months in advance to essentially purchase and take down those bonds. Option two would be, we think that the Fed is just going to keep right on cutting interest rates. And if that's the case, we'll just pause. And then we would do the same deal, but we would do it in September. If that happens, we could have estimated savings of about $2.5 million. So putting it all together, this deal, worst-case scenario, will save our taxpayers about 5.7 million dollars. Best-case scenario, we could be pushing 6.2 million dollars. Questions about the bond refunding and what that means for the district?
So I'd like to see the analysis from Baker Tilly and understand the sensitivity because I'm worried that we're jumping at the first cut and it's too soon. And we're going to leave money on the table because, you know, you can't refund every six months, et cetera. You have like one shot at this, and if we jump at the first cut, I think it's too soon.
Understood. One of the things that we have looked at, and there's generally a threshold that you would want to make sure you're meeting before you would do a refunding. And so what Mr. O'Brien is asking is, even though right now there's a threshold that we would eclipse, it's possible that we would go ahead and refund, only to kick ourselves when a year later the Fed cuts at another basis point.
So you can't keep rolling that?
Uh, no.
The transaction fees make it, because it's a fixed cost to do a refunding. It's, you can't overturn the fees to make it worthwhile.
Imagine, again, take it all back to your own home. If you went ahead and refinanced your mortgage, you pulled the trigger thinking that a half basis point, half a percent, was great. Six months later, it drops to a full percent lower. You've got to analyze all of the closing costs that you're going to have to pay. Same concept. We have to get to a point where we think it's about as good as it's going to get. You go ahead and make the decision, and then my advice, not that you're asking me, would be, then you ignore what happens after that. Just like you do in your own home. You kick yourself and go, oh, if I'd have just waited too late. You didn't wait, just, you know, bird in hand's worth two in the bush.
What's the cutoff date for, how far, how far ahead do you need to kind of look at your?
So you've got your call dates established, and once you've met your call date, you can, at any point in time, you know, decide to do basically an optional redemption and say to the bondholders, we're calling all those bonds back. Now, in order to do that, you got to be able to pay them off. So once you've reached your call date and it is a current refunding, you kind of have those decisions to make, depending on the best timing.
If we were to agree that this idea is, you know, the best idea, that we were willing to jump, and you looked at the analysis, you say, okay, I agree with this, is there time sensitivity for the next meeting, that it has to be done then to be able to do that? Or is it something that we then have the flexibility to still get this period of time later on?
The legislation will be permissive, and it will authorize the bond counsel and me and the municipal advisors to make the decision and execute the refunding at the most optimal time. So the initial legislation does not lock us into the numbers you see here. What it basically says is, is the board is saying, proceed with this deal. Between now and March, if the Fed cuts the interest rate two more times, we're going to win. So think of what I would ask you to pass as a permissive piece of legislation that allows me to work with bond counsel and municipal advisors about the exact timing of when to do this.
Is there something that would trigger, like with next meeting, that you would need it by next meeting to be able to do that? Or is that's just sort of the preferred to keep it rolling?
Well, you can't just, so we would begin working on the refunding because we have to do an official statement and we have to do all kinds of research. We would start working on this probably in October or November. So a piece of legislation that permits that work to start is probably the wisest, or underwriters and bond counsel are just going to say, well, you know, we'll provide you with basic, you know, views of what it could look like, but nobody's going to get down to business until the legislation has been passed. So I guess what I would say is, I'm understanding a thought of, does the legislation have to be passed on October 10th? My recommendation would be for it to be because it locks us into nothing. At the end of the day, if we pass it on October 10th, and let's say it goes haywire and the Fed goes the other direction and raises interest rates a percent, we're locked into nothing. We don't have to do a thing. Even with the legislation passed, there's absolutely nothing we have to do as a district. But certainly something to, we can continue to talk about. But that was my thoughts. Could it wait until November? It could, but we kind of want to get started on some of the preliminary legwork that would be involved regardless of where interest rates go, if we decide to do it.
And so again, don't take my questions as pushing back. It's, I just want to understand sensitivity. I think this is a good way to demonstrate, you know, a lot of districts just issue their debt, forget about it. You know, we're actively managing the debt portfolio to get the best interest rates we can to deliver the debt service and get it to an optimal point. So I think it's great that you're looking at it. It's just, I just want to understand the sensitivity is better.
No, one of the things I've even asked already, and if they're listening out there, I've asked our underwriter and our municipal advisor, so the bonds that they would design to refund these issues. I've already asked if they have to be built in with a callable provision when they're only going to be around for the next eight or nine years, because I'm sure we'd be able to bump the interest rate and get better prices if what we issue has no call provision. Now, the flip side of that is, without a call provision, if interest rates really, really, really go low eight or nine years from now, we're stuck. That's why, again, you decide to do it, and then you just press on.
And even the taxable refundings, we've done it, I think, maybe once.
Yes.
And they're tricky, and investors don't like them. But I want to understand the truth.
I'll have both of them to you very shortly, yeah.
So this is, so a lot of folks would be doing this that are paying attention. So is that, does that impact the market for what we're going to save? So there's a huge flood, right? Everybody's been sitting and waiting to refinance school districts and homeowners. So is that, how does that impact the market?
You're the expert.
I mean, a lot of what has happened is, by the time we get there, quote-unquote, baked in. That's what the underwriters say all the time. It's a way of saying that a lot of the volatility, a lot of the things, the market has a way of knowing. Is that kind of what you're asking, would us, considering this?
I would just say, the homeowners market's not going to compete with the municipal market.
Correct.
The municipal market stands on its own, and the municipal market's typically deep enough to withstand kind of different surges and issuances because you've still got new issuances out there, refundings out there, but it's, there's still sufficient appetite for new issues and refundings. So I don't think it'd be a point where, like, if we're late to the game and all the money's gone.
Okay.
There's always appetite for municipal.
It's a reason why we work so hard to keep, you know, our S&amp;P rating is AAA. Our Moody's rating is AA1, which is still excellent, excellent credit. It's called a split rating because even though it's the highest tier with Moody's, it's not the tip-top, whereas with S&amp;P, it is the tip-top, the AAA. So what Mr. O'Brien is saying is, is I'm fully confident now, six months from now, two years from now, our debt is something that a lot of insurance companies, banks like to hold on their balance sheet because it's a good investment.
There's always mine in the banana stand.
So what I have then, the rest of the issues for you are standard kind of things, minutes from September 12th. We need to revise the minutes from August 8th for the reasons that I love to state, ministerial errors. Acceptance of donations, we've got the donations for the outfield fencing at Orange High School from the baseball boosters at Orange, concrete sidewalk at Liberty from the Liberty High School senior class of 2024. And then finally, a pollinator garden also at Liberty High School from the Olentangie Rotary Club and Liberty, excuse me, Garden Club. The 2025 appropriations, that's just a fancy word for budget. We're revising the budget and asking the board to approve that. And then finally, the 2024 financial report. I will be meeting on Monday with the Finance and Audit Committee, and I will be doing the first read of the five-year forecast on October 10th. Feels a little bit early, but I've made arrangements, I think you're all aware, I won't be able to be here at the October 24th meeting. So we have one board meeting in November. The first read will be October 10th, and then the adoption of the five-year forecast would be in November. So get your good questions and your popcorn ready for the five-year forecast because I'm just really looking forward to it.
As long as you don't do it at Olentangie High School.
Yeah.
Because we can never hear you.
That's right. So any questions in closing? And then we have one public participation. I'll read it when I get back to my seat.
All right. Great. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
So this evening, Mr. Lester, Andrew Pass is here, and he would like to speak to the board about curriculum.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Pass.
Hello, thank you. I briefly spoke with Dr. Blackley before the meeting started, which was fantastic. And I know that I need to speak with her in order to move forward, but since I'm here, I'd like to introduce myself to the board. I'm the founder of an educational content development company that partners with school districts to collaborate with teachers to develop customized curriculum. And one of the reasons why I started the company was because my own son struggled in school. Smartest kid I know, dropped out of high school and got into drugs. And I always said that if he was 10 years younger, the curriculum would be that much stronger. And it's now been 15 years, he's 29. Fortunately, he's on a great trajectory, but a lot of curriculum is still not that strong. And kids are not engaged as much as they can be. I have to tell you, sitting here and listening to the presentation, the first presentation on five stars, that's fantastic, and obviously you guys are doing it right. And here's what we can add, just so you know. We can collaborate with your teachers to develop the localized content with a professional publisher, as we are. We've been working in the industry for 15 years. And then once it's done, we can market it to the rest of the country. And then a portion of the revenue that comes in comes back to the school district. And that's our model. So I drove down from Detroit because I know that this district has significant number of students and it is in significant size. And I'm glad to introduce myself, and congratulations. Five stars just says something really terrific about your district.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I encourage you to speak with Dr. Blackley. Great, thank you.
So, Mr. President, if we could, we should probably review the public participation policy so that, I'll just say, vendors don't come in and pitch to the board as a regular course basis. We have avenues for that to happen, and it's not this meeting.
Sure. Yeah, I hear you. Okay, so we are now going to convene into executive session by revised code, higher revised code, section 12122G3, to discuss disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action with legal counsel present. As I mentioned at the outset, we will be returning to have further discussion and vote after that. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
A discussion? All right, hearing none. Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. DeRico?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes. All right, we are adjourned and we will return. All right, we are adjourned and we will return.
It is 8:09 PM. We're reconvening from executive session and we're moving to our first discussion, first and only discussion item, which are the board policy updates by Dr. Fett.
Good evening. We have two board policies that we'll recommend for edits and adoption this evening. Those two policies are 5517, the district's anti-harassment policy, and 5136, the district's personal communications device policy. The updates recommended relate to the student conduct and relate to student conduct and are presented as part of our continuing practice of updating policies to reflect state and federal law and to improve clarity of language whenever we can. I would like to give a little history now for context. As the board knows, a lawsuit was filed in, against the district in May of 2023 by a group of parents called Parents Defending Education, representing four anonymous parents in the district. The lawsuit was filed in the federal district court and challenged the constitutionality of our policy prohibiting harassment and the policy related to student use of personal communication devices, like cell phones and computers. A hearing was held and the district court issued a decision in the district's favor, finding that the parents had failed to meet their burden in the case. The parents then appealed that decision to the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, the federal court of appeals that reviews cases for Ohio and other nearby states. The Sixth Circuit held oral arguments early this year and then issued a decision, again, in the district's favor on July 29th of this year. So why then is the policy committee recommending changes to these two policies? Even though the district prevailed in the case, we see an opportunity to further clarify the expectations of student conduct in these policies and specifically address the Sixth Circuit's guidance in the case. First, looking at Board Policy 5517, anti-harassment. You will see one substantive change under the bullying heading. This is to remove the reference to speech that causes discomfort or humiliation. While some speech that causes discomfort or humiliation might constitute bullying or harassment, not all would. Removing this language avoids concerns that the language is overbroad, but does not take away from the intended purpose of the policy, that is, to prohibit unlawful harassment. Next, looking at Board Policy 5136, personal communication devices. The recommended changes here provide clarity in order to differentiate between in-school and out-of-school conduct, and again, clarify what type of conduct is prohibited under the policy. In order to do this, we have added separate headings for in-school versus out-of-school speech, and we have clarified the language in the policy to directly reflect the binding decisions of the U.S. Supreme Court and Sixth Circuit case law. As you know, the board's policy committee meets regularly to review our policies and to update them in accordance with the law. We consult, we consult with our board's attorneys in this process, and we have done that here. We believe these policy changes are important to the district's ongoing commitment to the safety of our students, including our commitment to maintaining an educational environment free from bullying and harassment. Because of the great importance we place on student safety and the interest in providing clear guidance to our students as soon as we are able, we are recommending that these policies be adopted tonight. Are there any questions?
So I know that you mentioned this, but I want to underscore it and just be clear about what this does and does not do. The policy continues to prohibit unlawful harassment and bullying. We continue to use the same underlying legal standard for it. We're just clarifying our language. We're not saying that it's okay to harass, that it's okay to bully, anything like that, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. You can see that where harassment is defined in the policy, the definition has not changed. The district policy prohibits conduct directed against another student that is threatening, insulting, dehumanizing, and it also must either place the student in reasonable fear of harm, have the effect of substantially interfering with the student's education, or the effect of substantially disrupting the orderly operation of school, and that does not change at all in the policy.
And I just want to be very, very clear about that, and I want our community to understand that as well. Keeping our students safe, preventing bullying and harassment, these are fundamental, fundamental values for both this board, for the district. We don't tolerate that sort of stuff at school. We've defended this lawsuit. Speaking about that, we continue to be very clear about bullying and harassment. These changes don't change that expectation. What these changes are doing is being very precise about the language, so that we are in alignment with the law, so that we eliminate ambiguity, and it's important to not have ambiguity because we don't want people who are engaged in otherwise lawful speech to feel that it might be prohibited, but we also want to be very clear about what is and is not bullying and harassment.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fett. So we'll now move on to our board consent action items, or I'm sorry, our board action items. The first action item that we'll take here is the recommended approval of board policy updates, as the ones that Dr. Fett just spoke about. So before we get to that vote, I just want to be very clear that adopting board policy is frankly one of the most important things that this board does as a legislative body. Ohio law requires us to adopt bylaws, to adopt policies, both for ourselves and for all of the district's employees and students, and then we're bound by those bylaws and policies. It's a very fundamental part of what we do. When we take this important task, it is essential to us that we are clear in the language that we use, so that everyone understands exactly what is permissible and what is prohibited. We want everyone to know what's expected of them. As a district, we regularly review these. We have our policy committee that meets regularly to talk about this, and I want to stress that we have members of the public that are on that, as well as administrators, as most board members, and we get that input so that we have that community involvement. The changes today are specifically coming out of guidance that we have gotten from the Sixth Circuit, from the U.S. Supreme Court, and that have been recommended to us by our legal counsel. They've been reviewed by the policy committee, which Ms. Schreiber and I both sit on, and most importantly, I think these policy updates are going to make the language clear for our students. Dr. Fett, I appreciate you putting these together and working with our legal counsel. Some of these are in response to stuff that just happened a couple months ago. Obviously, we want to take a little bit of time to develop them and not rush in and make sure that we have wrong language, but now we're at a point where the school year has started, and it then presents a challenge to us as we're trying to get these standards in place as soon as possible. This board's process is normally to have two readings of policy, where we have it at one meeting and then we listen to comment, we go to a second reading. However, our bylaws and our policies do allow us to adopt policies at a single meeting, where we have reason to believe that that's for the safety of students in the community, and when we're talking about anti-harassment and bullying and those sorts of things, we believe as a board that that meets that exception. That's why we're presenting it here for a vote as a whole. So that's why we're doing it here, and frankly, it's just a matter of not waiting a day longer so that it's very clear for people what those standards are. Therefore, I'm recommending that the board adopt the policies tonight, at tonight's meeting, as is permitted under our board's bylaws. So I will entertain a motion to adopt the policy updates.
So moved.
Yes, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. DeBrieco?
Yes.
All right, the second board action item is approval of a compensation agreement with Orange Township, a non-school TIF agreement. Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Meyer, would you speak to that a little bit, or maybe both of you?
Yes. We were approached by Orange Township-
We were approached by Orange Township probably four to six weeks ago. They are interested in creating some commercial TIFs, essentially up and down the spine of Route 23, but through interactions that Mr. Meyer and I have had with our various townships, local municipalities, I think they've become, you know, not that they were never uncollaborative, but they're getting even more and more collaborative in working with the district and trying to be sure that as we have different projects where in the, for the sake of economic development, those entities desire to grant abatements, we now have a pretty good relationship with those entities, and this particular agreement basically says that as Orange Township seeks to enact those commercial TIFs, that we will get 100% of what we were supposed to get, TIF notwithstanding. There are some safeguards in here that they will still notify us within a slightly more relaxed standard of 14 days rather than 45 calendar days, and then certainly should this board or subsequent board members at any point in time feel like that, you know, there needs to be a more thorough analysis of a TIF and/or TIFs, or more thorough discussion of a particular type of project, this Board of Education has the authority at any time to essentially rescind that compensation agreement and go back to negotiating more on a TIF-by-TIF basis. Also, keep in mind, for the sake of the board and our community, all of these entities have the ability to enact a 75% abatement for up to 10 years. There would be nothing that the school district could do about that. So ultimately, this is a type of collaboration where they're trying to meet their needs, and they are indeed, I believe, trying to reach out and make sure that they're not harming the school district, and the law contemplates exactly what we're recommending we do here tonight. Mr. Meyer, anything else to add?
Yeah, no, I just would echo the collaboration between Orange Township and the school district, again, meeting their needs as well as holding the school district harmless.
Any questions then? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the compensation agreement with Orange Township?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
All right, our final board action item is the recommended approval of a resolution of intent to not provide career technical education in grades seven and eight during the 2024, 2025 school year. I recognize that can sound a little odd, so Mr. Meyer, can you explain what the reasoning behind that is?
Yeah, it sounds a little odd, but this is a yearly board action item that we do here in Olentangie, and it has to do with our course of study in the middle school and how we deliver those courses. We're on six-week rotations in the middle school. Because we're on six-week rotations, we don't actually meet the minimum minute requirement for our family consumer science courses, so the board, we ask the board to waive that each and every year because we're confident in our delivery model and what we do in the middle schools.
Great. Any questions then? All right, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll move, yeah, that's what I'm doing, sorry, it's late.
Good job. Heck, I'll second it. Mr. Jenkins, just so we're clear, so Mr. Jenkins, all right, sorry, any discussion? All right, Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, we're now moving on to our treasurer consent action items, Mr. Jenkins.
Yeah, members of the Board of Education, I'll be presenting all my items tonight as one single consent calendar. Certainly, I'll cover them quickly, but the intended effect is for all of these to be moved and seconded and voted on as one single motion unless a board member would like to pull an item or items out for individual discussion and vote. Item A, approval of the September 12th minutes. Item B, approval of minor edits to the minutes for the August 8th meeting. Item C, approval of the noted donations. Item D, approval of the 2025 permanent appropriation and/or budget resolution. And then item E is the approval of the 2024 financial report, again, board members. These are being presented. And item F, as one single motion and action unless you desire now to pull something out and discuss it further.
Would anyone care to pull any of these out separately?
No.
The September 12th meeting minutes were really good ones, and we can read them. All right, hearing no, appetite for that. I want to entertain a motion to hear them as one consent slate.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Meyer, the superintendent consent action items.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lester. Board members, I recommend approval of the following superintendent consent action items A through F. A, specific human resource items certified staff. B, specific human resource items classified staff. C, specific human resource items classified substitutes. D, specific human resource items supplemental. E, approval of students for early graduation. F, approval of business management facility items and within that, one item to declare students impractical. I'm asking you to approve these items by one single action and vote unless you'd like to discuss any of these items separately.
All right, would anyone like to discuss any of these separately? All right, hearing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
I've got to write that time.
Great.
Second, sorry.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes. All right, before we move to adjourn, I just, one additional thing I wanted to note, Dr. Fett, I recall that our policies talk about our student handbooks, or our policies impact our student handbooks, and the code of conduct that's within those as well. I know that it says in there that if any of those policies are changed, then, you know, then we're going to have the most, that the most current policy language is going to prevail over that. I think it's really important that we're clear for our students, you know, what that is for our community, what that is, so if we can have in our board update tomorrow, just be very clear about what these changes are and explain to the families those, that they supersede this. You know, I know my kid has a planner with the code of conduct in, I've offered to autograph it for her, she said no, but if we can be very clear about that so that our community is aware of that, that would be great. All right, with that, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned.
All right.